I'd like to call the January 18th Board of Education meeting to order. If you would all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. They keep moving that away? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I think to keep us all on our toes, they move that flag around in here so we're never exactly sure where it is. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Education meeting tonight. For those of you who are guests here, we welcome you. And we would remind you, as I've done for quite some time now, that we do videotape our meetings and that the videotaping equipment is in the back. So if you would very much like to be on TV, turn around and your face will be on TV at some point. Way to go, kids. That's exactly what I would have done. So tonight, the first item of business for us is to adopt our agenda, so I would entertain a motion to do so.
Mr. President and I move to approve the revised agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the revised agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we are ready for our superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President and school board members. Tonight is one of the nights that I get most excited about the superintendent's report as we get ready to have our second board update of our board priorities. And I would tell you, this is also a night that I get excited about the fact that we moved it ahead of recognition because I think one of the most important things our school board has done this year is the establishment of priorities that will guide our work. And I think this is a great opportunity for our parents and even our young people to hear about the priorities of our school board and to get an update as we focus on the board's three priorities. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Collier, and she will get us started. I hear her feet. And she'll get us started with board priority number one.
Good evening. I know it's been awhile since we've talked. This evening, we are happy to present to you the activity and the progress from second quarter on our board priorities one, two, and three. And so, for a reminder for everyone, if you haven't been present or are unaware of the board priorities, board priority number one is this, to increase the learning and achievement of every child through the development of a comprehensive academic framework informed by the needs of our students, the district's strategic plan, and the 2016 Academic Systems Review. So, priority one, accomplishments during second quarter. You have previously approved the purchase of Schoology, otherwise known as a learning management system. So we wanted you to be aware, related to that work, and we talked to you about that first quarter, that we have completed training with all principals and assistant principals. And I had to just adjust that just a little bit because of our recent snow day. We actually have moved that last training, but that will be occurring next week. And we've also completed Schoology training with over 500 teachers across our district. And what's interesting for you to know is that we have begun conducting surveys at the end of those trainings, asking a question about, based on the training and what they know from colleagues in their buildings, do they see that the learning management system will be meaningful and useful in their classrooms and instruction? And there's 100% positive response on those surveys at this point. So we're very pleased with that and certainly would like to compliment the efforts of Dr. Whaley and our instructional technology staff who are conducting those trainings and doing that work with staff from all of our buildings. We also are currently in the development of a staff communication relative to the expansion of our learning management plan, first and foremost, helping staff understand that our curriculum and its associated resources will lie within that particular system. We talked to you about that last time, that videotaping we believe should be concluded here about the end of this particular month. And we actually have staff that are working with us on that, and the message will go from staff to staff, pointing out the positive benefits of expansion of learning management system. Also related to the conversation we just had upstairs in our instructional work session around the notion of learning, is keeping in mind building and enhancing that culture of learning, that the learning of the adults is just as important as the learning of our staff. We know there's a high correlation between those two, and we want to continue to lead that learning with our administrators. And they too, this past quarter, participated in professional development opportunity focused on just instructional practices in their buildings. And all of our building principals and all of our assistant principals participated in that training, and we received too, positive feedback on those experiences as well because we believe it helped to sharpen or add to their toolbox when it comes to knowledge about instructional practices and teacher evaluation as well. In addition, we have, as you are aware, completed the first phase of development of innovation track. And with Dr. Sharp's leadership, we'll be providing you regularly, regular updates on that work, and we're actually preparing for one of those now, and you'll have one of those in your board update, so you're aware of the details, the semantics getting worked out. In addition, we are continuing to engage in, and just this morning, we're with our district leadership team again, and engaging in learning and dialogue around this notion of equity and leading through the application of an equity lens and had some great conversation. And related to that topic, our administrators that are part of our district leadership team also conducted a self-assessment related to equity, and we reviewed the results of that self-assessment today, which serves as data and information to help us know where we go next in terms of practices, protocols, and again, information to inform that learning. We also have completed, and through the leadership of Dr. Eric Flack, we are getting ready to kick off in just a couple of weeks, the work of a curriculum management plan. And I've listed on this particular screen ASR, Academic Systems Review, and that review called for the refinement of and building of a curriculum management plan. And I'll remind you, that curriculum management plan includes our design model for curriculum, the delivery, expectations associated with use of resources. It's really very comprehensive. And this summer, during instructional work session, you will see the specific work associated with that. And Dr. Flack and those that he will be working with are excited to get underway because, quite frankly, the future of what we will be doing with instruction in our district is very much linked to, independent upon that plan. So, no pressure, Dr. Flack. I'm not sure where you're at. Next, work that's underway. I've just talked to you about the fact, I've already mentioned, that the curriculum management plan work is beginning to commence. And then we're also, we have started dialogue around a draft of that three-year instructional plan earlier upstairs. I referenced to you a focused, a few focused areas here that's noted as four, although it may not necessarily be four. I can tell you, we've started at six, we've moved it to four, and based on conversations just yesterday, maybe narrowing that even more. We wanted to be very clear in our work that we bring to you this summer, and we want to be very clear to everyone what priorities are, and they should be few and deep versus wide and thin. Finally, we've already referenced and talked upstairs about the development of our R7 Principles of Learning. We will be working on that and bringing those to you hopefully in completion this summer. And then, we also are in the process of reviewing and will be bringing forward and sharing with our building administrators a revised approach to building improvement plans and documentation for school improvement processes. And then finally, we are in the process, we have moved to May versus June, C-SIP update where we invite our C-SIP team to review the updates in all of those particular areas. We're currently, through superintendent's leadership team, receiving updates on those and will begin to consider later in third quarter, any amendments we may be recommending. You're aware of, I believe through board update, that we will be engaged in conducting a teen summit this spring. We have that work underway and it'll be focused on student well-being. We also are beginning to draft through the leadership of Dr. Kristi Barger, an assessment plan, and that recommendation too comes from the Academic Systems Review, and that will overlap with our curriculum plan. So we're excited to get that draft going, and we know from our building principals, even teachers, they're anxious for some of the content that will come out of that particular work. Again, you'll learn more about that final product this summer. And then, as Dr. Carpenter referenced in work session, instructional operations team is focused on review of board policies that touch instruction. And then certainly, in all of this, we remain mindful that the real successes are happening in our schools with our students, and of course, too many to name tonight, but we will never want to lose sight of that magical work happening in classrooms. So related to priority one, I'm happy to answer any other questions. Otherwise, I will be turning it over to Dr. Hedrick.
Thank you, Dr. Collier.
Priority number two is to ensure equitable access to 21st century learning environments by engaging stakeholders to update the district's comprehensive facility master plan, or CFMP as you'll hear me referring to that throughout the next few comments, to meet the instructional and programming needs of all pre-K to 12 students. Doesn't seem like we've done a lot, or a lot of time has passed since we gave you the last update, but there has been a lot of work done. We, last month, the board approved a contract with DLR, Gould Evans, to take us through this comprehensive facility master planning process. So that following day, actually, Kyle Gorrell and I met with DLR to start talking about that scope of work so that we could clearly articulate and define not only what our expectations are, but what we can expect that the process to look like. Following that, and the winter break, we had a follow-up meeting with them to prepare for our meeting Tuesday of this week. And the meeting Tuesday of this week involved our instructional operations team, our superintendent's leadership team, and also our core planning team. So we had a great group with a lot of different varied backgrounds. And really, that process was about a three-hour meeting on Tuesday morning, and the purpose of that was really for DLR and Gould Evans to facilitate a conversation with that group to really, and really it was kind of a fact-finding, where there weren't decisions made, but it was really an opportunity to have a really great dialogue about a number of things. Where are we going in this district instructionally? What kinds of facilities do we need to support that? Those kinds of things. And so, they talked to us, in fact, they had a butcher paper on a wall, as long as this one behind me, full of notes. And so, using that to help them evaluate and kind of guide their work. But the things that they talked to us about, and the purpose of that meeting was for them to kind of define what the scope of the comprehensive facility master plan will be, what does the process look like? How are they going to approach it? They talked to us a lot about engagement of a lot of different groups in terms of what have we done in the past? Who have we missed in those conversations? Whose needs to be included as part of that? Whose voices are we missing? We also provided through the process, a number of pieces of data to DLR that we'd previously done from community surveys and other documents to that effect. Dr. Collier and her, and the instructional team, provided a lot of good information on the instructional focus as well. We've also provided DLR and the group, our demographic, our most recent demographic report. So there's been lots of things in that process that have been shared and lots of data to go through. We also talked about, okay, what's next? That engagement piece is going to be a huge component of this so that we can get all of those stakeholders to the table and really find out from students, staff, parents, community members, all sorts of stakeholders, what are their expectations for our district in terms of our CFMP. So we'll be going through that process. They've kind of articulated that from the work that we did on Tuesday, that they will be putting together kind of a more defined scope and with a lot more detail in it. That will be the next really document, if you want to think of it that way, that we received from them. We also, this morning at our DLT meeting, we had representatives from Gould Evans and DLR who talked to all of our district leadership group, and really just to give them a very cursory review of what that CFMP is all about. So that was, and gave our district leadership team an opportunity to ask any questions and keeping them in the loop on the process and where we are in terms of the whole completed So, a couple of things then, we still will be working on over the next couple of weeks is Kyle Gorrell and his staff have already put together a pretty good review or a listing of our current facilities, and just going through that with DLR to assess kind of their current condition, if you might, if you think about it that way. We also are, will be looking with DLR and our staff here, our capital improvement plan that addresses such things as our HVAC units, our roofs, our flooring, all the things that are part of the facility per se. So we can, because that will be a part of that CFMP. And then we'll also, we've also done, and will be reviewing the information with DLR, our building capacity review. Kyle Gorrell really put together a pretty comprehensive process that involved a lot of our instructional leaders and our building leadership in terms of how are they currently using their buildings? And so, that's important in terms of numbers of students, classroom space, and that kind of thing. So we know, in looking, combining that information with our demographic report, where we need to look at, or are going to have some issues in terms of having classroom space. So we will be finalizing with DLR and Gould Evans, that scope of work, which will include cost estimates in terms of, and also doing the contract review and execution, and hope to have that completed by the end of January. We're also, will be presenting to the Board of Education, our capital improvement master plan review, which really is another component, just really of our long-range planning for this priority. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this, on board priority two.
Julie?
All right. You mentioned a meeting on Tuesday. Who was all involved in that?
It was our instructional operations team, our superintendent's leadership team, and our core planning team.
Okay. And you met with the L-R?
The L-R and Gould Evans. And they also have another partner who will be doing a lot of the community engagement work. So that person was in attendance as well.
Okay. And then so, who will apply and how will they apply to be on this team?
Well, we have not, we have not decided yet if that, we have a core planning team. That core planning team is made up of mostly a community, business, parents, grandparents. We have one administrator, other than Kyle and myself, one building administrator and one teacher. The rest are all community or business members of. And they were selected from a survey that was volunteers, and they were selected from that group of people who volunteered to help with this process. And at this time, we started with a small team to actually do some of the work of going through the interview process and that kind of thing. And so, I have talked with DLR on a couple of occasions about what does that look like as we move this process forward? Do we expand that to a much larger team or not? And so, we've not really finalized the details of that at this point in time.
Okay. And then I just want to make note that there won't be any of us school board members on that team.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Kim?
Yes. I was just wondering, as we look at the facility assessment review, I was just curious, are we looking at specifically too, in the individual schools, at the size of the classrooms, the actual size of classrooms? Because I find that as I go on at school visits on Thursdays, what I'm seeing are some, even in some buildings, the size of the classrooms vary dramatically. Sometimes you have very large classrooms, and sometimes there are some that don't seem large enough for the amount of students who are in the classroom. So how are we going to address that issue of the difference in sizes of classrooms when your student capacity for, say, a certain grade is only so many students?
Well, we've kind of looked at that already in terms of the facility, the capacity work that Kyle has put together. We actually have a very detailed spreadsheet for every single building, every classroom, every room that's in the building, what the square footage is, and how that build, that space is currently being used in terms of classroom space or not classroom space. And some of those areas that are really smaller than what a typical classroom would be at this point in time, where they're, in most, in a lot of cases, they're being used for other class, you know, smaller classes or work, or, you know, as an alternative site for doing some other things that aren't really classroom space. But we have incorporated all of that into that piece that says, what is that building's actually program capacity? Does that make sense? So that if it's too small to use for a classroom, we've not counted it as using, as space available for a classroom. Does that make sense? What?
Are there other questions? Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome. I'll turn it over to Janice Phalen.
Thank you, Judy. I'm going to bring my chair so I don't feel like I have to lean over quite so much. But we're on priority number three, which is about building trust, communication, involvement, collaboration, and engagement. I'll start with our second quarter accomplishments. One of the major ones was Dr. Carpenter's 100-day report. So, Dr. Carpenter, feel free to jump in anytime if, nope, he's not going to jump in, that's all right. As you know, it was presented to the Board of Education on November 16th. We publicized it. It has its own special website. You can go there and see the brochure. You can see the complete report that was from the board meeting. You could see a one-minute preview. And you can see that we shared the brochure with our schools, with some community groups, and dropped it off at several community locations. And also, social media has been out there. Next on our list, during second quarter, we met with Citizens Advisory in October and Business Roundtable in December. And this next item isn't technically second quarter, but it was so close, I put it in. And Dr. Carpenter, again, you can feel free to jump in. He launched his blog on January 2nd. It's called "The Learning Changes Daily." If you haven't read it, there's an interesting story behind the name. So anything, do you want to add on that?
I think the second piece is coming out tomorrow.
Oh, are we? Okay. I didn't know if you were going to hold that for a little bit longer or?
Let's do it.
Let's do it. Okay. The second piece will come out tomorrow. And more accomplishments, since we passed our no-tax increase bond issue back in April of 2015, we have been trying to do some progress as promised features. It touched every school, built the MIC, so we've had a lot of social media as projects got started, as they finished. We have, it has its own website too, and we've been working with our media on some regular updates. And thanks to Kyle Gorrell, he was the executive producer of this video, with help from Sean Harrell, who's our new part-time video person. We have a video that lasts about 60 seconds. It's just a sampling of the projects, but don't blink or you'll miss some. It's just a sampling of the projects, but don't blink or you'll miss some. And, um, I don't know, I, this isn't really part of our priority, but that's amazing. We passed that bond issue less than two years ago. And Kyle looks, probably looks tired just thinking about it, but so many projects and so many promises kept, so, um, thank you, Kyle and team. And this segues nicely into our video efforts. Since July, we've been trying to increase our video efforts. If you check out our YouTube station, which used to just have, I hate to admit it, five or six videos on it now, it's just packed with, um, some great videos. Our equity video minute, we started in October and we've got three under our belt. We're working on our fourth one right now. Already mentioned our superintendent's Hundred Day Report video. Thanks to Cinematic Visions there in the back, we are continuing to broadcast our Board of Education meetings and we're working on a video series for the new staff learning management system. Our next steps, um, we're going to revise our website in the next few weeks. We're planning some type of coffee with superintendent events or community events, planning for a communications audit, and we're looking at staffing for next year. Excuse me. Any questions?
Thank you, Janice.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the only thing that I would add is I want to commend the work of the three leaders who are on first base relative to the board priorities. I think that they have assisted the district in developing a laser-like focus in the areas that you've identified as most important over the course of this school term. I also think that we were aggressive when we identified those priorities this summer because in at least two instances, they're probably going to take us in the next school year. They will be ongoing priorities when I think about the comprehensive facilities master planning and also priority number one. But that's what we've been doing and that's literally what we've been up to. And thanks, Dr. Hedrick, Ms. Phalen, and Dr. Collier, and of course, the associated teams. Thank you all a bunch.
Well, the next portion of our meeting is recognition and presentations, and I believe we have some students who are anxious to, uh, do a presentation for us. So, um, I will turn that over to them.
Habit seven, checkers and cards. Are we present at school and you're checking the cards, moving time to time, consulting on additional supplies? We're lucky you, for you to be more about our leader and your guys, so we'd like to invite you to our next leadership day of February. There are invitations for each of you, the names are out, please, we're going to get you. We also have some letters to share from our faculty. We now know why we each work to support our learning community and we wanted you to know why we did all our setting the grades. Thank you for your input. Thank you all, and of course. And welcome to the life of being here for everything you do for us. We wish you a great, best of good. Habit seven, open this box. We will see you next week.
Mr. President, would it be possible maybe for these students to turn around and face the audience? I know there's parents out there that are wanting pictures and, uh, might be for them to see. Maybe they want to sing that song again to their parents.
They probably should sing that song to everybody. Some very good advice in there. That was awesome. Thank you very much. If you are a parent or guardian or friend of the folks who are up in front, would you please stand up so we can recognize you too? Thank you. And thanks to our teachers and administrators at Prairie View for your support as well. Thank you very much. That was absolutely lovely. At this point in our meeting, it's time for comments from the public. Do we have any tonight, Linda?
No, we do not.
We do not. Thank you very much. This is a really good time for those of you who have other places to be and other important things to do to exit as much as we think the rest of our meeting is going to be spectacular. The next portion of our meeting is our reports from our board members of, uh, meetings that we've attended and committees that we serve on. Uh, so we'll start down on, Kim, on your end.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I will report from the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. Uh, the foundation's new assistant started at the beginning of the year. Her name is Jordan Newman, and she has her undergraduate in communications and her master's degree in public administration. She most recently worked at Turn the Page KC, a reading initiative nonprofit initiated by Mayor Sly James. Uh, Jordan went to Lee Summit High School her freshman year and she went to Lee Summit West her sophomore through senior years. Her husband Cory graduated from LSU, so they have all the high school bases covered among the two of them. Uh, we're excited to welcome Jordan. Uh, this year, the foundation's 25th birthday, which will celebrate the Taste of Lee Summit on Saturday, March the 3rd. Taste of Lee Summit tickets are on sale now and we hope to have our school board members and all of our community members in attendance and bidding freely. Um, tickets are $75 per person. You can purchase them at the foundation's website or you can drop by the foundation office with your check and your guest names. Um, the foundation will be awarding, um, more than 50 scholarships to graduating seniors this year. Applications are available on the foundation's website and are also available in each of the high school guidance offices. Um, scholarships range from science, robotics, teaching, healthcare, debate, engineering, ROTC, athletics, music, at-risk, students who attended specific elementary schools, along with scholarships available for all students regardless of their future area of interest. The application deadline for all scholarships is March the 5th. Also, the foundation's Major Saver fundraiser kicks off at the end of this month and the 1st of February. Many of you've probably been approached before to, um, purchase your Major Saver cards. If you don't have an opportunity to purchase a, a Major Saver or dining card at the, and next month from a student, you can buy one of those from Cheryl Frankie, who will try to have those available at our next board meeting. That's all I have from Lee Summit Educational Foundation.
Thank you. Kim, Adam?
Finance committee meeting and audit committee have their own special agenda items tonight as usual, so we'll talk then.
Julie?
All right. Lee Summit Cares is gearing up for their, um, mayor character breakfast and that is next Thursday. And I'd get there at 6:45 and, um, I think it'll be a great time. They're selling some T-shirts, so bring a check or your debit card. So there's a kindness shirt, a respect shirt. It's kind of the new cool, so. And we had our CAC meeting at Great Beginnings Tuesday night, and I think, um, Dennis has a couple more things, he's going to talk about that. And then, um, Team Lee Summit, um, we got snowed, had a snow day last Thursday, so we're having that meeting, um, tomorrow, starting at eight. That's about it.
Ellis? Thank you, Julie.
Yes. Uh, Team Lee Summit is at the top of my agenda, uh, for a lot of reasons, but there was a snow day and I did read word for word just about that entire survey. I made notes, highlighted. I was so ready for that meeting and it was canceled. And it has been moved to tomorrow and due to an obligation that I accepted, a commitment back in October, I judge talent competitions throughout the country, I'm leaving for Baton Rouge, Louisiana tomorrow. So I'm disappointed that I will not be there, but I was assured that we will pick up steam. It's going to, the meeting's going to end a little early tomorrow. We'll pick up steam on the 31st and I will be there raring to go. And I, I think it's a great, great group of people. Um, I also, the weather just played havoc on my meetings because I'm a member of the Health and Wellness Committee and that meeting was canceled on Tuesday due to the weather. So, and there's a lot of great things happening in that. I just got some information from Dr. Miller and, um, Dr. Flack, and, um, I am super excited about serving on that as well. And I'm sure that you will be communicated lots of, um, interesting and pretty powerful information that's come out of, uh, some of the studies that has taken place. Did attend last Wednesday at the Missouri Innovation Campus, the Economic Development Council, um, annual meeting, not annual, uh, meeting, and the topic was cybersecurity. And I found it so incredibly interesting. Um, it was being presented by an alum of our high school, Lee Summit High School, which, uh, was just a further connection for our district being so, um, important in the cybersecurity industry, uh, arena. Our kids have gone on to win national championships and, um, it's a pressing issue that everybody needs to think about from whether you're a homeowner to a small business owner to a school district, to corporations, um, some real important things going on that we need to pay attention to in cybersecurity. Uh, it was at the Missouri Innovation Campus. I just got to put a plug in. I know she's not here, but Dr. Med, Elaine Medcalf does a phenomenal job out there. She is well spoken and introduces everyone so well. So it was nice sat with Judy Hedrick. That was a nice time, um, to be together. Teacher of the Year is coming up. That is a committee I serve on. We will be accepting nominations. Laura Maxwell heads that up for us every year and looking forward to once again reading and then being inspired by our educators at our district. When you read through those, it really, really brings to forefront of why our district is where it's at. It's because of all the great work that's being done by our educators in the classrooms. And so I'm looking forward to this leader in me and I think that's all I have to say.
Dennis?
As Adam has spoken, we had finance meeting tomorrow and we got some more things to come to you all in just a few minutes. The capital projects team met on, I believe, January 4th as we begin that process of, uh, of what the different buildings have turned in as their priorities for, as part of the projects that we hope to be able to, to work on, uh, as we begin this summer. The CAC, we did have our, our meeting on, on Tuesday evening. It was at the Great Beginnings Early Childhood Center. Uh, excellent program by, uh, Ms. Bame and, uh, and, uh, Ms. Cook. Um, a, a, a big thanks goes out to them. Excellent video, excellent, uh, just overall program. The reason I say that is I talked to several people at that, parents or patrons, that is the first time they have ever been in that building. And there are even some staff members who have never, the, part of our staff in the district who had never been able to be in that building. So it was, it was really, and I, they did a very nice tour and, uh, I think that, that opened the eyes of some people that, that, that early learning. We got some work to do in that area as far as being able to provide, uh, for more students. I, I, I don't know how this works, but, but maybe one of these R7 minutes that we have maybe needs to come from someone in that, in that building. I, I don't know how that, how that's chosen, but I thought about that, another way for people to see, uh, about that building or about what goes on there. Um, excellent MLK, uh, presentation, celebration, I guess you should say, uh, Monday night. Kudos to Dr. Carpenter, excellent leadership there. Um, uh, also pleasantly, uh, Elementary and, and Lee Summit High School. Uh, they sang song and, and I don't know who the young man was from Lee Summit High School, but I definitely never gave him voice lessons. Uh, he, he, he was a-
His name is Jack.
Okay. He was, he was absolutely outstanding. Just, uh, coming up, not really committing any, but some of us are traveling to Jefferson City, uh, next Wednesday. The silly season has begun down there and, uh, so we'll be going down to, to visit with, uh, and that's some of the Business Roundtable and some of the others.
That's right.
And then on March 9th, uh, the CAC will again host a breakfast, uh, with, with the legislators, uh, at that time. Uh, to my knowledge, there is no TIF information before the city council at this time, so we've not had any meetings there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Jackie?
I'd say it was batting cleanup, but I think, uh, I'm going to, uh, polish up a little bit about what Dennis shared here. I, I have the responsibility for government relations. I think it's getting to be a bigger responsibility than I knew. And he was my ninth grade social studies teacher of all things. I'll, I'll start with the, the short part of the report. Uh, both Adam and Dennis noted and, and I'm sure Bob would as well, uh, the audit committee did meet last week and we have reviewed extensively the 81-page audit and we'll have conversation around that on item number 10. But we really appreciate all the good work that the staff did and under Judy's leaderships. Uh, Dr. Hedrick, excuse me, my voice is still recovering from a cold. Thank you for your leadership with, with the committee and the help that you gave us in responding to our questions. Uh, the, uh, the, the government relations function, polishing, polishing. I do attend, uh, the Lee Summit Chamber Government Relations Committee meetings on behalf of the board and we had that last meeting, uh, just before Christmas and there's really not a lot to report about, uh, events surrounding that, but we were able to discuss recent board action at that particular meeting. And also I had the opportunity to have a personal meeting with the Lee Summit Chamber President, Tim Arbiter, and we had a very good conversation around their government relations program. So, uh, he's a real community asset. He's a new person to the community and he's eager to, uh, grow and, uh, have a, have an excellent chamber program. So shifting gears to the actual, uh, meat of the subject, the, uh, Missouri General Assembly convened on January 3rd and I've been down there a couple of times and will be down there again next week, uh, with, uh, this particular group. And I've had the opportunity to engage with the Government Affairs Team from MSBA already and, uh, we're having good conversations. Um, and interestingly too, through a, a business connection I have with the Missouri Chamber, uh, their leadership and the, and the work that they're doing around education and workforce development. And they really like hearing about what we're doing as a district to aid our students in their preparation for, uh, their respective careers after, uh, they go on out into the world. And some of their legislative updates, we're uncovering other issues that weren't necessarily tracked by some of our resources. So kind of merging those two together on behalf of, of the organization. And so we'll, uh, we'll have a better report next month to share, uh, you know, candidly, uh, there's not been an extensive amount of activity, uh, in either chamber, the Senate or the House, and a lot of that is driven by, uh, uh, recent news developments. So, uh, we- So we hope to have a very good visit with some key education leadership. We have, we have built good relationships with our local delegation. It's an extensive delegation, but there are some key decision-makers that we need to familiarize our group with and, and, and create a two-way communication, one of the seven habits we just heard about, with, with those folks. So I think that's going to be a really great opportunity. And like Dennis, I want to echo his comments regarding the Martin Luther King Celebration on Monday night. It was, it's not the first year I've attended, and I, I think it was even better attended this year, and I, I just thought it was another excellent program. So thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I had several meetings as well. EDC was one of those, along with Julie and Phyllis. Also had the opportunity to attend the IRC, which is the International Relations Committee, had their, it's a networking event at Summit Technology Academy, and got a chance to, to participate in that and see some of the kids and some of the things they're doing, along with some very interesting international food that was prepared by, by our hospitality management program out there. Although by the time I got there, there wasn't a whole lot left. So, but that was a good event. So it, it seemed like, for a while, I hadn't been in the, in the new building, and then within the last month, I think I've been there 15 times, so it really kind of felt like home. I just thought I ought to probably move a desk into an office somewhere and just take up residency, but I don't know that anybody else would have thought that was a good idea. So that's our reports for the Board this month, and you can see that our Board members are very active in the things that they're involved in across the community and the district. And those things that these folks just mentioned are only Board responsibility pieces, and I can guarantee you that there are many, many other things that the folks who sit up here on the dais are involved in across our community, along and beside their Board responsibilities. So thank you all for the hard work that you do in our community and for our schools. The next portion of our agenda is our finance report, and I'm not sure who is up on that tonight, but Mr. Smith, is it you?
Thank you, Mr. President. Investments through December total approximately $124.4 million. The revenue and expense report, variances in revenue and expenses by fund were reviewed. The variances are due to timing of receipts and expenses. Other financial issues that we discussed, the 2016-17 audit. The audit was completed in late December and vetted through the community-based audit review team with MAR and Company auditors on January 9, 2018. The audit report contained no deficiencies or areas of noncompliance, but did include one finding related to bank reconciliations. The district's response to addressing the finding was also contained in the report and was thoroughly discussed by the Finance Committee. The report is available for public review and has been filed with the appropriate state and federal agencies. 2012A bond deficits, the bonds issued as part of the 2012A series are eligible for deficits by paying the principal amount of bonds before their maturity date of March 1, 2018. This process allows for the district to save $73,500 in interest costs, positively impact the debt service fund balance, and pay the bonds without incurring additional debt. We had a construction and maintenance update. The project schedule to be initiated in the following weeks were reviewed. These projects include the Woodland Sewer, Mason Elementary HVAC, tennis court resurfacing at the high schools, Trail Ridge Intercom replacement, floor and paving improvements, and LS, Lee Summit West High School retaining wall repair. The Finance Committee also discussed the need to move forward with the BCMS gym floor replacement. Transportation program evaluation. Keith Henry, Transportation Director, reviewed the department's annual report. Key points discussed included the department's mission of connecting students to instruction, continuing and enhancing safety efforts, ongoing training for all staff members, the exceptional school bus inspection passage percentage, ongoing screen initiatives, and focus on providing safe and comfortable transportation to students. Transportation staff were complimented in knowledge for providing a clean, innovative, and professional school environment on wheels. Mr. President, will there be a couple actions or votes that we need to take here?
Go ahead.
Okay. The first one is 6.02, to approve the transfer of $3,979,141 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Second? Okay. We have a motion and a second to move funds from the general revenue fund to the special fund. Is there any questions or discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries.
Second one, 6.03, to approve the treasurer's report and payment of bills.
Second? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report and payment of the bills. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Next portion of our agenda is our consent. The first portion of our consent agenda, which are items 701 through 708, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda, please.
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda items 7.01 through 7.09 as presented this evening. Excuse me. Eyes are failing me. 7.08.
Second? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items 7.01 to 7.08. Is there any discussion on this motion? Kim?
Just one quick point of clarification. 7.05 Economic Development Committee, R7 representative, this recommends that Dr. Carpenter is our representative for the remainder of the 2017-2018 school year, and I was just curious, who has been our representative up to this point?
It's always been the Superintendent or the Associate Superintendent, although I think we're all members of the Economic Development Council, so any Board member may attend those meetings. The Executive Committee is the one that the Superintendent is a voting member thereof, but we all are members and can all attend EDC functions.
Okay. I was just curious, because the way it was stated in there, I just like, okay, who was it?
We have to do that each year, don't we, Lynda, to reappoint that person?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this portion of the consent agenda. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Item 8 is the second portion of our consent agenda, which is to ratify contracts over $5,000. And I'm pleased to say, for the second month in a row, we don't have any, which is, which is really great. For those of you in the audience who don't understand why that's a cool thing, it's something that we would rather not have, so we're, we're pleased to have none of those. And next month, we'll probably have five of them, so it's just the way it goes. Okay. Item 9 is our items for decision, and these are consent agenda items for contracts over $5,000, which would be items 902 through 9.10. I would accept a motion on those items, please.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the new contracts for over $5,000 as presented in consent agenda items 9.02 through 9.10.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Ms. Ritchie?
Okay. Yes. 9.05, approved Missouri Department of Conservation grant application cooperative agreement. Dr. Collier, in this item, it says you are seeking approval for fifth and sixth graders to participate in Missouri Department of Conservation programs called Conserving Missouri's Aquatic Ecosystems and Nature Unleashed. Sounds like fun to me. I see that this is a grant program, so what is our cost for the program since it's listed under contracts over $5,000? I'm just, I'm just curious on that.
It has been our practice under Board Policy DGA to bring grants before the Board for approval. So we, what this actually is, it involves a fishing trip, actually, for these students, and we do not have, unless I'm unaware through Dr. Kepner or Dr. Flack, any other financial obligation associated with this.
Occasionally, grants do come with matches, sometimes a 25% match, sometimes a 50-50, which is why we, I think we put those on the Board agenda so that everyone's aware that we're engaging in a grant, and they are contracts, so. Okay. Are there, yes, Kim?
Sorry. No, I'm just full of questions, aren't I? 9.08, Scenario Learning Safe Schools Customer Agreement. Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Just in the description of that item, you say these services have proven to be very beneficial. Do we receive yearly data on the use of the program by our students, and also, how much online instruction do our staff members receive under this program?
Yeah. Great question. Actually, Scenario Learning and Safe Schools is one of the things that we moved towards when we were looking at documenting training for our staff members and also providing an online alternative for people to be able to take that training, both at the work site or at home, or any place, to be quite honest. That documentation has been very beneficial, first and foremost, from the student perspective in the fact that we're able to provide kids with an opportunity to learn about how to treat others. We have a system that our, our staff members can use that is consistently based, and it allows for kids to provide feedback. The feedback for the staff, for the students, I have not read in detail. I have previewed it, but I could tell you the person who's in charge for the adults in this district and for all of our staff members, we track that weekly, and that has saved the district time and time again, and more importantly, or just as importantly, our staff from being in a legitimate or in a legal situation that could be legitimized because someone said, "You never received this training. You never had the opportunity to preview this information," and we have that documented. So it's been money well spent. It's about $20,000 is what the contract is. It provides services for both students and staff. In our area, we use it primarily for staff.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, we do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of approving consent agenda items 902 through 9.10, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. A motion carries. Okay. The next portion of our agenda is our items for decision, and we have, the first one is our 2016-17 audit.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I will turn items 10.01 and 10.02 over to-
I'll turn items 10.01 and 10.02 over to Dr. Hedrick. Dr. Hedrick, please.
On the audit approval that we're seeking tonight, I believe that we have provided for you information in terms of the background information and the activities surrounding the audit. I'm not going to really make any other comments other than just to reiterate that we would consider this a good audit. We were, did not have any area of deficiency or noncompliance. We did, however, have one finding, which is the first finding the district's had in many years that I can even count or remember. We have, as, as indicated to you previously, and as we talked about with the Audit Review Committee and with the Finance Committee, we have spent uncountable hours getting the reconciliations completed and also, at the same time, implementing processes and procedures for that work to be done, for us to address internal control types of issues surrounding bank reconciliation. And through our conversation, really at the finance meeting, have some other things that we can hopefully bring into that process to make it even more streamlined and efficient and auditable. So the other thing I would mention to you is that we continue to have a very willing community-based Audit Review Committee, and we do appreciate the time that they spent here with us reviewing that document. As, as indicated in the background information and, and in the finance speaking points, we are required to publish a summary of the audit, which should be published in tomorrow's paper. In addition, the report is required for federal and state agency reporting, and those, both activities have been completed at this point. So I'm happy to answer any questions the Board might have at this point in time.
Let's get a motion on the table, please.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the 2016-2017 audit as presented.
Second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions and/or discussion on this motion? I would say that as a member of the Audit Committee, we, a very comprehensive review of the audit is conducted, not only by, by the staff, but again, by a committee that is made up partially of our citizens and partially of Board members. There are three Board members that sit on that committee, and that, again, the results are also shared with the Finance Committee, which includes a number of other Board members. So this is something we do annually, and it is a very comprehensive process. I know it's a royal pain in the rear for Judy to have to deal with this every year, but it is something that we value as important. So with that, if there are no other comments, Ms. Clark?
I just want to say, for my first year of being engaged in this process and having served on some fairly large nonprofit organization boards, I really appreciated the conversation we had in reviewing the audit, and, and like Bob, I want to echo the fact that the, the staff led by Judy, Dr. Hedrick, sorry, I always call you by your first name.
That's my, I had that name first.
That's, I understand. We, we really do appreciate the leadership that you gave that conversation, and again, thank you to you and your staff. Please let them know that we appreciate the hard work that they do every day.
We have a motion on the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I think our next one is our bond defeesance.
Dr. Hedrick?
Yes. Thank you. You might recall from our conversation back in November, when we did the earlier refunding in anticipation of those federal tax law changes, we indicated we thought we would have one more issue to come back to the Board with, and this is the issue. And it's, it's really just defeasing this issue that is actually callable, or it's maturing on March 1st. And as you recall, hopefully, from that conversation, anything's, any payoff or calling within 90 days of the maturity date, we're still safe to do that and not, not have the option to do that. And so in talking with George K. Baum, our financial advisor, we have identified this issue, and to pay it off at this point, just in advance of when the payment would be due anyway on March 1, we will be saving the district about $73,500 in interest costs alone. The other thing that this activity would help us to do is, we also talked to you back in November in regard to the monitoring of our debt service fund balance in terms of being able to maintain our dollar seven cent levy, and then also looking at that for not only the current or the short term, but the long-term financial planning that we'll need to do, consistent with our comprehensive facility master planning and our capital improvement planning. So that, that debt service levy is going to be a very critical part of that, that planning work that we can do. So this allows us to reduce our current fund balance so that we can maintain that levy, if that makes sense, moving forward. So I think it's a, it's a good recommendation on the part of our financial advisor, and it saves us money, and we're paying this debt off without having to borrow additional money to do that. So I think it's really a win-win-win for, for the district. And at that, I would stop and be happy to answer any questions that you might have about that.
Let's get a motion on the table, please.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the defeesance resolution and the letter of escrow instructions for the 2012A series bonds.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions about this item?
Mr. President, I just have one question, and I know I'm catching you- Mr. President, I just have one question. And I know I'm catching you completely off-guard here. What's our total roll-up of what we've saved by these two actions, assuming that this particular motion is approved?
Well, I believe the savings on the last refunding we did in, that the board approved in November was about $2.8 million in interest, and then, so we have another $73,500.
So, we're just under 300, or 3 million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's a really positive thing for our taxpayers. And again, in looking at our long-term strategic planning in terms of the financial plan we will need for, to support some of these other activities that we'll, we'll be doing, that's a, that's a very positive thing for, for our financial picture.
Adam?
I think she kind of answered some of my questions there, as she usually does. Judy's, we have mind link, so.
That's way over in my head.
Well, what I was going to say, we generally talk a whole lot about budgeting and revenue and expenses, but like, the financing and investing activities that we do are really important. And I know we have a good investment policy statement.
Yes.
Is there even such a thing as a financing policy statement, or just kind of our general philosophy or approach to borrowing and, you know, how we periodically monitor, or is it largely just kind of your, your skill and attention to these details?
Well, I will answer that question in this way. A couple of things. I think that the, really, the, the strategy is looking at our long-term needs in terms of, do we have bonding capacity to issue additional debt that is needed to support the activities that we deem are, are necessary and appropriate, in terms of having revenue to either, you know, build new facilities or improve our current structures and all those kinds of things. And that's why one of the things that's really critical, I think, as the district moves forward, is to have that long-range planning, both on the comprehensive facility master planning side, but on the capital improvement side as well. Because there's a lot of, you know, as big as this district is, there's a lot of expense needed to keep our facilities maintained. And there, we have probably more needs than what we have money. So, that, that comprehensive planning, including the financial plan, is very important, and keeping that levy at a place where we can issue bonds at no tax increase, I think, is again, another very positive thing. We do legally have a limit of how much debt we can issue. We are significantly, as, as was indicated in the audit report, significantly below that. We, you know, five years ago, we were planning, we thought at that time we would be issuing bonds about this time, and that we had a lot of, we could have, we had enough capacity to do that, to issue, have a couple of bond issues without reaching that limit and/or having to have any tax increase. So, that is something that we do monitor. And, and that's why, in the last couple of years, in the process of evaluating and calculating the tax rates on an annual basis, that debt service fund balance is such a critical thing because you can't just set that levy at whatever you want to. You have to, there are certain limits by state statute in terms of how much that levy can be. So, as I've looked the last couple of years, we were inching up to the maximum that we can have set for that debt service fund levy. And that's partially due, which is a good thing, to the fact that our assessed value increased fairly significantly this past year. It was over a six, about a six and a half percent increase, so, which really drives that tax rate calculation, as you'll, if you'll recall from our earlier conversation. So, I think that's the other thing, is to keep the, you're, you know, really have to be thinking more in both short-term needs and long-term needs when you're thinking about financing, especially when you're talking about bond issues.
No doubt.
If that, did I more than answer your question or not?
Nailed it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Julie?
All right, you two talking numbers really, like, goes over my head. But what I did hear, and you know what I want to say, is we need to make sure our taxpayers know this. So, some quick little blurb in the R7, some social media, just, hey, we save the taxpayers three, whatever. So, that's what I heard from that whole conversation. And don't talk more numbers.
No, just, did we already do that for the initial? So, this would just be an additional...
We did, right.
Yeah, attacking that, okay.
Yes, we did.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the defeasance resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next portion of our agenda is to approve additional financing. Whoops, I, nope, additional elementary Title I paraprofessional FTE. My mouse went crazy on me there.
10.03, Mr. President, and 10.04, Dr. Jeff Miller.
Absolutely. Be more than happy to answer any questions. I might add that if you look, we take a long, hard look at what our needs are with our Title I monies and with a collaborative approach by Dr. Kephardt, Dr. Coyer, as well as the needs of our buildings. We feel like this is really going to be, for the amount of money it is funded completely by Title I, a wonderful addition to Westfield Elementary, help fund the needs of kids there. So, I'll answer any questions. Not else to, nothing else to say there.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion on this, please.
I move that the board approve the additional personnel request as submitted.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the additional personnel request. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the personnel report. Dr. Miller?
Absolutely. More than happy to answer any questions. I will take ownership in why there is a little bit of red on there, because when I first did the report, Laine Metcalf, who is obviously our principal STA, her end date was noted as 5/22/18, and I would like for her to work another month. And so, I changed that to 6/29/18, which is what it should be. So, that's, that error is on me and no one else. And at this time, I will answer any questions the board might have.
Again, let's get a motion on the table, please.
I move to approve the personnel transactions as presented and contracts issued.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's open the floor for any discussion. And I will start basically by saying we note some, some very important retirements on the last several personnel reports. And we'll probably have a few more as we go along. It's just the way things go when you have as many employees as we do and they reach that time in their careers of 30-plus years, that it's in their best interest to, to do something different. I will say that all of those folks who are, are leaving, we will miss them greatly. And it's with some degree of sadness that we would approve those retirements. But it is also, as those of us who are already retired, there is some degree of joy in there as well that allows you to be able to have the flexibility to, to move in your career path in a direction that is totally and completely of your choosing. And you can do only the things that you really want to do and not do the things that you don't like to do. So, you have that to look forward to as well, I hope. Are there any other questions or comments on that?
It was just an observation, when I started looking at this, that the three Js are leaving us. Jeff, Janice, Judy. That's just observation.
And I'm the least important of those three Js, that's the truth. But I could tell you that if you look on the report tonight, and I know Dr. Carpenter's going to make comments, but Judy Hedrick, Laine Metcalf, and Sherri Lewis are pillars in this district. And, and I would be ashamed if I didn't mention that. They're pillars when it comes to leadership in this district.
Outstanding leaders. Thank you for mentioning that.
Mr. President?
And I, I would agree with that. When I saw, when I saw Judy Hedrick's name come across our, our email, I was shocked. And I said, "Please tell me there aren't any more J names," because it was just amazing. They, all of you, all of these folks will be terribly missed. The wealth of information and knowledge that these folks, as well as the ones that we've discussed in the last meetings, have brought to our district is just immeasurable, really. And we are going to have a really rough retirement reception, I think, with a lot of tears at the end of the year.
Dennis?
Just, just real quick, and I think Linda, yesterday, Jeff just mentioned that the pillars that, that you, ladies and gentlemen, have provided to this district. And unless you've had the opportunity to go out and consult or work in other school districts, the people at Lee Summit have been spoiled by not only the, the status, but the stature that you and others, and there's teachers in here too, that have dedicated their life to this district. And we're all replaceable, but you have set that foundation for those who will come forward. And, and kudos to all of you. Thank you so much. Not till June 30th, but continue the great work that you, you do. And you've seen it all night with all these different reports that come from, from these people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do we have any other comments? Because if we, we do not, we're ready to vote. I will, I will tell you that I must abstain from this vote. And again, it is not because I don't want to vote. It is because I have a relative who is on the list. So, by, by state law, I'm not allowed to vote on that. So, just want people to understand what that reasoning for that is. Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. Linda? Okay, we are ready then to move to our presentations, and I believe we have a presentation from our Partners in Ed program.
Good evening. In the interest of being concise and respecting the, the time that you dedicate so selflessly to our district, this is a one-slide presentation this evening. I did provide for you a document that gives some additional information and details about the logistics of the program. But what you see before you on this slide, I think, is reflective of many of the programs in our district right now. We are recognizing what has worked well and served us well in the past, provided opportunities for students. And through Partners in Education, when I reflect on the legacy that has been built over the past 27 years with this program, we've had about a quarter century of serving students with a structure in this program that has served us very well. This community values and emanates a culture of collaboration and has contributed thousands of hours to our students in a variety of capacities, in those types of partnerships that were referenced in your report. And we've had that emphasis on curricular connections and positively reinforcing those curricular concepts that are being taught in the classroom by engaging business professionals in various classrooms and across K-12 environments to help students really understand the relevance and application of that curriculum in the work world. As is the case with any effective program, there are times when you need to reflect, review, evaluate, and modify to continue serving the needs of, of students. And so, that's where we find ourselves right now with this program, working through the process right now of creating some surveys, both internal and external, to glean from our stakeholders what we need to be doing in terms of best practices for engaging our community in partnerships. And those will be forthcoming in the next couple of months. I can assure you that the intent will be to continue that culture of collaboration that has permeated Lee Summit and I think is one of the strengths of this program and our community in general. And as we do that, we will keep in mind that we are partnering to prepare. And that's in relation to our mission behind you. What does prepare mean? Preparing each of those students for success in life. And I think one of the things that I can assure you, as we do this program evaluation and determine if the structure we've had is what's best to continue serving us moving forward, we'll be doing so with that same, looking through that same lens of equity and providing opportunities for each of our students. So, unless, I'm happy to field questions if you have them, but that's kind of the, the state of the program as we are.
Julie?
I don't know if this is really a question, but in reading the 100-day report, and we're talking about collaboration, I'm hoping that you're taking Dr. Carpenter to all our partners and making sure he knows all these businesses. I know that's a lot to ask, but I just think the Partners in Ed program really shows our businesses what our schools are doing and that they can take that out to their businesses. But they, and they can see, you know, in the future, what they, what we need. You know, we're talking about the innovation track and all that. So, I'm hoping that you two are collaborating with this group, because these are the businesses that really, you know, they vote for our stuff. I, I just want to make sure that you guys are working together with those businesses. That's just my only...
We have a meeting scheduled here in a couple of weeks, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Questions for Laura? Thank you very much. Whoops, got one, Kim?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make a comment because I, I was on the organizational side of Partners in Ed when I was at Pleasantly Middle School and at Campbell Middle School. And I don't think that we can take very lightly the importance of all of these businesses to the school district and this program. These businesses volunteer, we don't have to go out and beg them to do this. They volunteer their time. And sometimes they meet on a monthly basis, sometimes it's a quarterly basis, but they give lots of time, depending on how active their partnership is with the school. But, I mean, countless in sometime, in some case hours, that these business people give to this program and give to our kids in each of our schools. And I just really would like to just go on record as thanking each of these businesses for their participation in this program and their contribution to the education of our kids. And Laura, I'd also like to say thank you to you, because if it were not for you and your organizational skills and your ability to keep this program up and running, we would not have it. And we would not have a lot of the opportunities that we do for our kids. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'd like to make a comment.
When I speak to other people from other districts, whether it be at MSBA, one of the things that I hear that resonates loudly is how very fortunate we are to have a district that has such support from the business community. And again, I do believe that is a lot of reflection of your hard work with these businesses, bringing them in, because we, I hear you're lucky to have such good business support, because it's a, it's such a win-win partnership. So, so, thank you.
Thank you. It's, it is indeed our business folks. They, they are awesome.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
We have two written, well, three written reports. So, if you have any questions and/or commentary on any of the written reports, we can take them at this time. Kim?
Yes, I just feel like the, these folks do such a great job of preparing their reports that they need to, there needs to be some notice here given. On 12.01, Keith Henry, excellent report. I appreciated all the photos of, of your staff and your students. It's great to see so many of your employees involved in programs that are positively affecting our, our students. And it goes without saying, but our Transportation Department safety record is exemplary. So, thank you very, very much for that report and what you do every day out there. Thank you, bus drivers. You know, I always said, as an assistant principal in a school, people go, "Oh, you have one of the toughest jobs there is," you know, "out there being a middle school assistant principal." And I would say, "Nope, there is someone who has a much tougher job than I do, and that's those bus drivers. They really do. They have to, their backs are to those kids." There you go. Thank you very much. The second thing I want to say is, on report 1202, Wellness Team, thank you for your report. I don't, do we have any members of the Wellness Team in here in the room?
[inaudible]
Okay, thank you very much. I, I read this report with interest. It appears, I'm going to read this because it, I, there's so much to it. It appears that our students need to work on their... It appears that our students need to work on their upper body strength. Do we still have chin-up bars and monkey bars? That's a rhetorical question. I also noticed that attendance percentages went down just a little in most schools, except for a big increase at Hilltop, for an average of 92.2% attendance rate overall for our district. In-school and out-of-school suspensions rates were down last year district-wide, and even though our elementary students really don't like eating their fruits and vegetables, their plate waste rate was down significantly from previous years. So that was a very informative report. Thank you.
And Erica, we'll call your attention to page four on the total meals served column for 2016-17. You might want to check your math there. Page four. Got to, it must have run off the page. I just wanted to know that I read the report. Phyllis, I believe you had a comment?
Yes, I sure do. Just want to scream loud and clear, big and loud, for our school bus drivers too as well. And that whole program over there, just fantastic, it really is. I serve on the Health and Wellness Team, so I was excited to see this report. And I sat down and just analyzed a little bit of it. And because it's, my interest has been piqued these days for our little K-6 learners and the behaviors and the challenges that our young learners are facing as they go to school. And one of the things that did stand out, I did know, Kim did note, that there was a decrease in 7th and 8th and 9th and 12th ISS, but there was a drastic increase in K-6 ISS in school suspension. It went from 166 students in 1516 to 212 in 1617. And that's a huge increase. And I think that shows our, is a great segue into future discussions about how we could best meet the needs of our educators in K-6. Because I've seen, I've been in the classrooms as of late, and they have a lot of challenges. They have their hands full. And so I really wanted the public to hear about that. It did go down in 7th through 8th and 9th through 12th, but it just caught my attention in the K-6. In OSS, I'm curious, somebody explain to me, what is OSS for K-6? What does that look like? What does that mean? I know, I know out-of-school suspension, but I mean, can somebody help me understand that a little bit? I know what it means for the high school student and maybe the middle school student, but what does that mean for K-6 learners?
For OSS for elementary, it's very similar. So it would be, it would be an out-of-school, would be a home environment or whatever that environment looks like for the families. We do look at a decrease of days. So the days that we request for OSS may look very different from our secondary. And a lot of times it's paired, it might be one day of OSS and one of ISS. So sometimes there's a pairing to have them back in the buildings.
That just seems so young for students to be taken out of school. Because sometimes they're not fully, maybe not fully aware of what they're really doing. I think by middle school, high school, I think they have a better knowledge of it. But I just was curious as to that. Because I have, what happens if a student is not, what if a little learner gets OSS and parents both work?
Most of the time, our parents work, figure out what that looks like. I will say that we then put a safety plan for students that do have needs in OSS or ISS many times and some outside of that, put a safety plan in place with parents of what that looks like upon their return, depending on what has led to that as a consequence.
Okay, thank you. And then I did make some notes on the elementary attendance rate, which I thought was really great. The schools that have lower and the schools that have the higher, it looks like Sunset Valley, Richardson, Hawthorne Hills, they have really high attendance. But all of our schools have great attendance. So I think that's what I wanted to say. And I really appreciated the statistics from Dr. Flack and Dr. Miller. I thought they did an outstanding job. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the reports?
Just real quick, Mr. President, again, goes back to transportation. Yesterday in our finance meeting, I mean, there were some things that, if you've got to read this report, and I don't, I can't tell which pages, but you go down and talk about 150 buses that had zero defects, you know, 900 tires, 6,644 light bulbs that worked, and so on. And it's so comforting, and I'm sure comforting to parents, because that's the first, when their student or their child gets on the bus in the morning, that's their move to what their school day is going to be like. That's one of the things that their school day is going to be like. And Keith talked to the Finance Committee yesterday, and something about, there's some things that this report has that the Highway Patrol, in their comments, and correct me, Keith, if I'm wrong, is that don't even go in the report, but we had a perfect record on that of just, well, Keith, what was that you told us yesterday? It was really...
Advisory comments.
Yeah, advisory comments.
There's a lot of little things that were just advisory comments that we don't get to work, we had zero. So anyway, and all the other reports, excellent reports, but I wanted to, and I love where
the bus drivers are going to schools and having lunch with the kids. That lets the kids know that our bus drivers are part of the family of R7 School, just like their teachers and custodians and everybody else in that building. Thank you.
And then, Mr. President, I just want to let folks know that I had a great visit to the Transportation Center. And forget about the live video of me cruising around in a full-size bus. I was not on the streets, so I wasn't violating any CDL laws. I am a licensed driver, though. And, and, no, I don't have a CDL, Phyllis. But, no, you do not need booster seats, folks. Anyone is physically qualified to drive these buses. I'm serious as a heart attack about that because this man is out recruiting people to be bus drivers. And there are not physical limitations. I mean, there may be something that I'm not aware of, but the seats adjust, when you're four feet, 10 inches tall, you can still drive a bus. And it was very, it was very easy. You know, if you drive a lot of rental cars, you know, you're always trying to get comfortable. It was instantly comfortable. I mean, truly. And I don't know that I should say this, Keith, but you did say you welcome the rest of my colleagues. Yes, and what you need to do...
I'm next.
Well, let's, again, within reason. But during that visit, you know, I was there during a pre-shift gathering, and the bus drivers, I'm telling you all, the camaraderie among the drivers was, it was just high energy. I mean, it was like being in a room of kindergartners. I mean, not that they are juvenile, don't get me wrong, for a moment, but they were very enthusiastic and eager to get out on the street and engage with the students. But what was interesting to me, and it's only because if you know my family, we're kind of a car family. And it was so great to get out in the shop, and they didn't let me under the buses, but Keith had me looking at the CNG tanks. And we walked through the body shop as well as the service bays. And he talked about the accessibility they have to repair a bus onsite and not wait in line somewhere else to have a bus service. So there's efficiency timewise, but also a dollar-cost benefit to the district. And he reports to me, I'm not going to be as good as Dr. Hedrick on this, but we've already paid for our body shop bay by doing that work in district. And so, you know, these are all decisions of previous boards, but this is the kind of thing that I appreciate, you know, in terms of accountability of the taxpayer. You know, the safety and security of those kids every day is the most important thing. And then to be able to run it as efficiently as you all do, it's just incredible. So definitely put that on your list of things to do for 2018, add that to your resolution list. If you want to see the video, I have it.
I'd love to see it, but I guess, are you going to next cook a meal in the cafeteria next?
No, she's driving the bus to Chip from the City next week.
Well, let's go to roundtable here before we completely disintegrate. And we'll go ahead and start with you, Kim.
All right, thanks very much. I just wanted to say that today I enjoyed a school visit to Longview Elementary, where my grandson Lance goes to school. Many thanks to Mrs. Kim Hassler for visiting with me about her school and taking me to tour basically almost every classroom in the school. We walked through the pods and saw all the rooms. Last week, I was scheduled to visit Trail Ridge and Greenwood Elementary on Thursday, which most of you know was a snow day. So we'll have to reschedule that one. I also just wanted to make a quick comment. Some of you made comments earlier about Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebration, but Monday evening, I also attended that. And it was a really memorable evening, I felt like, because of our, how much our school district participated in that celebration. Our LSR7 faculty jazz quartet played before the program started. Lee Summit High School sounds of Summit. What can I say? They were a wow. They were just a wow. Fantastic. Pleasantly Elementary School Choir was really great in their own right. And I need to say kudos to Dr. Carpenter. He delivered a really compelling speech on being united in the journey. And I really appreciated that speech. So I was very, very proud of our Lee Summit folks and the representation we got that evening to honor a very fine man. Thank you.
Adam?
Since I wasn't able to be there at the celebration, I'll share a cool thing that my former company, when I worked for JP Morgan and was officed in New York, we partnered with the King Center. And obviously, he did most of his work before digital files were made. So they took really almost his entire body of work, over a million documents, and made an electronic archive out of them, made them searchable, categorized them. You can find quotes, different topics, letters to and from Dr. King. And it's really neat, it's at the kingcenter.org backslash archive is the piece I'm referring to specifically. So in the classrooms, on topics that you wouldn't necessarily think of when you think of Dr. King, but economics, he has wonderful economic commentary and views and things like that. So I use it kind of throughout the year and especially in January. So kingcenter.org, brought to you by the King Center and JP Morgan Chase.
Julie?
All right, I just really want to encourage everyone, if you can make it to the Mayor's Character Breakfast, I think it's a great way to start off the year. And we've got some great character awards. And actually, this is Randy Rhoads' last Mayor's Character Breakfast, so if you can make it, I wish you would. Thank you.
Phyllis?
Love to just say that next week, Julie, thanks for reminding everybody about the Mayor's Character Breakfast. Next week is just a great week in Lee Summit. Because Thursday morning is the Mayor's Character Breakfast and Saturday night is the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner that I believe some of us are signed up to go to. Those are two events that are great. And then we do have Taste of Lee Summit, Kim did talk about earlier. I am working on the Live Auction Committee. I'm not chairing it, backing away a little bit to let others have the opportunity, but I am helping to find auction items for that. So you might be hearing from you, all you business people that are watching out there and fellow board members, I may be getting with you. I do want to say that I'm so proud of the audit report that came out. I would love for the world to see that, front-page headlines, Kansas City Star, because I do know that we did in previous year have to deal with some backlash on our audit. And so I'm just really proud to see that this business of kids is really managed beautifully as a business. And then I am leaving tomorrow for Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I did tell you all that, right? Yes, okay. I'm looking forward to judging a talent competition, sitting and watching kids like that did this tonight for two days. So anyway, and if you want to cook a meal in the cafeteria, I'll cook with you, Jackie. So anyway, have a good weekend, everybody.
Dennis?
I really don't have anything. I just, again, appreciate all the hard work that the staff and community members do. I mean, they meet for these, the audits and the facilities planning. We are so blessed with the community that we get to live in. Thank you.
Jackie?
Thank you. We, I just have to say that the several schools that I've visited during my work vacation leading up to, through the holiday season, helped me round out my visits to all three of our high schools, our middle schools, and all 18 of our elementary schools, in addition to visiting with Keith and his crew. I've got a couple more things I'd like to see. And Phyllis, we'll be cooking healthy meals if we participate, fruits, vegetables, that kind of thing, lean protein.
So can I put you down as an auction item for the Taste of Lee Summit?
Let's talk offline.
How about drive a bus? That would be a great Taste of Lee Summit auction item. I'm seeing it right now.
Ride the bus with me. Ride the bus with me. How about that? But in all seriousness, this was an opportunity for a listening and learning tour. I've tried to be in the various schools for various events and that sort of thing. And I just can't say adequately how much I appreciated the generosity of time and thought that the various individuals that I met with, from classified staff all the way up through principals that visited and talked about their students and their programs and their needs and the excellence that they provide every day. I want to note specifically, the visits were Summit Ridge Academy, Summit Lakes Middle School. I did attend a concert. I've been to Pleasantly Middle School a few times since I went there two years, too. And then among the elementaries were Woodland, Summit Valley, Trail Ridge, Greenwood, Lee Summit Elementary, Westview, Hazel Grove, and Hawthorne Hill. Underwood was, I think, my last elementary school, and I attended their pre-holiday assembly, I mean, right before the break. And man, you've never seen enthusiasm in K-6 graders like the assembly before break and the enthusiasm and the carol singing. It was just amazing. And it's just, there was some emotion in visiting some of our schools and understanding very personally that this district has people in need. You know, we talk about scholarships for kids. We have kids that need housing, safety and security. And we have to be mindful of that as we go about our decision-making and following the seven habits that our Prairie View Elementary kids reminded us about tonight. So on a lighter note, a bunch of us were at the Lee Summit North Boys Basketball Game last Friday night. I drug in a little under the weather, but made it anyway and got to see, hear, hear the pep band play and support the guys and watch the student section, the crazies. And they were, oh my gosh, the enthusiasm was just off the charts. But what was even cooler was the halftime show with the Philly fans. Phyllis, I don't know if you ever helped to choreograph any of these young ladies, but Dr. Carpenter's daughter was right up at the top of pyramids. I've got pictures. And it was, they just had so much fun in bringing, mentoring these little girls along. And it was just such a positive experience for the kids. And I would note that my nephew is in the pep band. He volunteered for that night. That wasn't one of his regular nights. And I'm pleased to report that he completed his requirements for his Eagle Scout last month. So Court of Honor sometime early this year.
Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I will echo last Friday night at Lee Summit North was a blast. We lost a nail-biter to, we lost a nail-biter to a neighboring district that we won't talk much about, but the atmosphere was very, very positive in terms of the ballgame and the little folks getting... the little folks getting a chance to engage. I heard about it all week in my house, that it was coming up, so I knew it was one that I couldn't miss, and that was a good thing. The only other thing that I would like to mention is our retirees. When you, we've had some commentary by Elaine Metcalf and Sherry and her work over at Bernard Campbell. She and I had a chance to engage for a while today, just phenomenal school leaders that are individuals that we're going to have to replace. And we're going to have to pick up the pieces. When I started to count up leadership retirements and then I started looking at the number of individuals who are in that category, I told Katie Carney the other day, we're the left behinders. Those of us that are left behind to pick up the pieces and make certain that we continue the tradition of excellence that our community is, can be proud of and will continue to be proud of. Then I wrote a blog, so it'll be released, I think, maybe it's getting released as we speak, baby, who knows? But then I wrote a blog. And the blog kind of talks about, without sharing too much, too much of it, the number 76, the number 101, and the word grace. So if you get a chance to read that, read about the 76 and the 101 and the word grace. And I think that's something that we all need to keep in mind as we move into our future. And when leadership to the degree that we'll have exit in June 30th leave, we immediately become a changed school district. You do not replace that type of leadership and not know that you are now a changed school district. And start counting up some years and doing some different things, and I think you'll agree with me. So there are numbers on my mind, and this sentiment of grace is also on my mind. So that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. The only thing I would add to what's already been said, I had an opportunity to attend the candle lighting service at Lee Summit High School with Jackie. Jackie was there. And I haven't been for a while, and of course, I've been to, what, 18 or 25 of those right from the very start. And I think when I was in my fifth or sixth year of teaching at Lee Summit, that was our 30th candle lighting ceremony then, and that's been a while ago. It was, it was awesome. It was a very, very well-done, kind of a, just a tribute to peace and to harmony and to understanding. And I was very impressed, as I always used to be, and even more impressive, they use real candles. And, and we've been doing this forever. And to my knowledge, there's been very few people who've actually been set on fire during that. A few, I, I think, but it's, it's generally a, it's such a cool thing.
Not in the class of 80, they weren't.
Probably not. No, but it was a wonderful, it was a wonderful opportunity to see a tradition that has survived for 60-some years in that school that is virtually almost impossible to duplicate anywhere else. It's the tradition itself that holds that up along with the wonderful message of the, of the season. So that was a fun thing to do. I don't know whether I mentioned it before, but I did get a chance to visit with Kyle's group over in maintenance, and that was, that was more fun. I could have stayed there for a lot longer time than I did. I was looking for a bulldozer to drive, not that I don't want to do a bus, but man, a bulldozer would be so cool. But they didn't have one available. So I'll have to go back when they get one. And they got a big blank spot that they don't mind the whole being dug in. So, but other than that, it's been a busy month, and we've had some, a lot of things to do, and we've had a little downtime as well. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you so much for attending.